We were talking about.
And there's Brian.
Can I do the acknowledgement after the roll call for Lawrence? You think that's appropriate time after the roll call?
Okay. We were talking about whether or not they have to feel, they have to come to meetings when their term expires.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Has to do with the city and the scheduling.
Yeah, so I think it's. To require it.
It's interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, interesting. I didn't think about that. Everybody, I'll wait for Brian to unload. Ready? Okay. This is a special meeting, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it is. Oh, okay.
Do I have to wait till she comes back? Good evening. Welcome to the Traverse City Planning Commission's special meeting. Today's Tuesday, November 18th. Welcome to all of you. So we're calling this meeting to order. Roll call, please. Commissioner McGilvery.
Here.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Here.
Commissioner Tredwell.
Here.
Commissioner Swanson.
Here.
Commissioner Cameron.
Present.
Commissioner Anderson.
Present.
Commissioner DeTuri.
Here.
Commissioner Hershey.
Here.
And Commissioners Heller and Knapp are both absent. They had other. I forget the word. Obligations tonight. Thank you. So as always, we'll start with our land acknowledgement. The land on which we gather is the territory of the Ottawa and Chipewa peoples who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. Thank you for your strength and resilience in protecting this land and inspiring us to uphold our responsibilities to do the same. We just want to take a minute to say that our thoughts are with the family of Lawrence Boyd, who was a valuable employee to the Traverse City Parking Services Department, who was tragically taken from us. We want to honor Lawrence's service to our community, and we are keeping his family and friends in our hearts. Tough times. Okay. So we can now move on to the topic before us, the one topic tonight for consideration. Consideration of a public way on the city-owned property at 225 West Grandview Parkway, which would be established through a public-private partnership between the city and the adjacent landowner, J.S. Capital. And I'm going to turn this over to Leslie Sektman.
Hello. So tonight, we are looking at the plans for this public walkway. This is similar to the plans that you saw a few months ago for the Public Pocket Park on East Front Street. And in essence, the question before the planning commission is in regards to whether or not this is consistent with the master plan. The Planning Enabling Act requires that the planning commission determine whether any public improvements, including parks, are consistent with that plan. The plan is kind of general in this area. And but this is part of the commercial core, and within the commercial core, the plan calls for areas to be set aside for public use and public parks. So that's kind of the core of the issue. I can also tell you that the other reference documents are the Recreation Plan and the Lower Boardman Consolidated Plan. And especially the Lower Boardman Plan does call for public walkways extending from Garland Street to the Parkway. And there are different areas identified within that plan that could accommodate that. So this kind of helps to realize that plan and get us a little bit closer to having that northwest access across the river. And I didn't, I failed to let you know that Sean is out tonight. He's got a kid event tonight with his daughter. But he has provided a staff review in your packet and as well as a recommended motion in support of, or I think maybe recommending, not in support of this request. So we do have representatives from the developer here tonight who'd like to share a little bit of information with you and answer any questions. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I'm Jeff Klett with Krieger Klett Architects. I'm also here with the new Syndicate Hotel team. We have Paul, Bridget, and Margaret. And we have a brief presentation, then we can answer any questions that you might have. So as Leslie mentioned, we are seeking approval for the proposed public way improvements and the easement. And the easement is really required to allow the hotel to gain access to the public way from a fire suppression standpoint. So when I say the proposed public way, I'm really referring to that 25-foot piece of property that's sandwiched in between the Hotel Indigo that exists in our new Syndicate Hotel. And it extends from Grandview Parkway, West Grandview Parkway, all the way to Boardman Street. So that's the piece of property that we're talking about when I say public way. And from a design standpoint, we really look at this as kind of the missing piece of the puzzle for the Syndicate Hotel development. It really provides that final connection piece around the hotel. As we developed West Grandview Parkway and Garland Street, this is really that last piece of the puzzle. And both of these elements are really designed in accordance with the master plan, in our opinion. So for example, as was mentioned, we're in the C4A District, Commercial Core Warehouse District, AKA Warehouse District. And most developments in that area are encouraged to be pedestrian-oriented and walkable. They are encouraged to strengthen connections to the downtown and the waterfront. They're encouraged to have activated storefronts. And they're also encouraged to have outdoor amenity spaces such as parking, pocket parks, perimeter landscaping, and further pedestrian connections. And we feel the Syndicate Hotel does just that. So before we get into the public way, I just wanted to kind of step back a little bit and look at the hotel itself. So these are some of the public benefits that the hotel and now the public way will offer. So what's shown on the screen here, that U shape, is the hotel building. So north is up. We have Grandview Parkway, which is also up on the screen. And then we have Garland Street, which is at the bottom. So again, the white space is the hotel. So that number one, that suggests that, you know, this hotel development activated Garland Street, which is important. There's been a lot of activity on the street, and there's been a lot of, you know, growth to encourage pedestrian-friendly streetscapes. And this is what this did as well. So we have a new restaurant we're proposing, a new fitness center, very pedestrian-friendly activated storefronts, new plantings along the perimeter of the building. We're a little bit tight along Garland, but it is heavily paved, so we are proposing some, or we did propose and we were approved to provide planters along that way. And along West Grandview, we have a bit more robust planters, more greenscape. Helps buffer the building, just softens it against the streetscape. And the pocket park is probably the biggest piece, you know, for the overall development. You know, that is intended for hotel use, but also for the public as well, too. Outdoor seating, outdoor dining, just the green space that's welcoming to the public. And then the fitness center, which kind of rolls into number one, is, you know, part of that streetscape. Again, that's an amenity for the hotel, but it's also for the public from a membership standpoint. And then last but not least, that missing puzzle piece I mentioned, number five, which would be the public way alley or the, you know, pedestrian connection. So these are just some images that we presented before. We were in front of planning commission for the hotel. The fitness center is the upper-left corner. And then the pocket park would be the lower-left and the right side. So that's just more of an aerial view and a streetscape view of that public park. You can see the outdoor seating, the umbrellas, just a lively space for the public and the hotel guests. I mentioned the master plan. I just wanted to provide a little bit of a snippet here and just to show that we are in alignment with those goals. The star at the top of the screen represents where the development is, so we're right within the commercial core area. And as it states in the master plan, the commercial core is highly walkable and designed at the pedestrian scale with a focus on creating a lively street atmosphere. And I think both of these two pieces will help do that. Again, design goals, pocket parks, public art. You'll see in the presentation that we do have a mural plan for the side of the hotel along the public way. It's an outdoor use, pedestrian, non-motorized, you know, no vehicular access, no bike access to that space. And then we're also in alignment with the Boardman River Plan in 2013. So this diagram is taken right from that plan. And it's, you see those red arrows that kind of suggest the connectivity across the Boardman River, kind of leading from the downtown area out to the bay. And it's maybe not exactly how that plan works, but you can kind of see that it does right along the Hotel Indigo. And right now, it seems like it's short-circuited there. It goes, it's a nice connection from downtown across to Boardman, all the way right up to Garland Street. But then the connection severs. So this will be that natural connection to kind of connect the dots all the way through. Development updates, as you're, I'm sure as you're aware, you see activity around the site. So this is an aerial view of the project, kind of as we see today. Our local broker took this image. But stair and elevator shafts have been fully constructed. First-floor structural steel installation is underway. Underground utilities have been installed. The concrete slab is poured, so we're making good progress. And we're still on schedule for the 2027 opening. So the proposed design of the public way. This is more an aerial view, overhead shot of that. And you can see kind of in the middle of the screen, there's that oval shape, that yellow oval. That's where this public way is, as I mentioned earlier, right between the Hotel Indigo and the Syndicate. And then that red dash line represents that pedestrian connection, you know, the bridge across the Boardman. It's already been established, you know, heading north. And then we're going to, our goal today, if approved, we want to connect the dots to finish that off. And I apologize, I had to turn the view, so now I'm disorienting a little bit. But in this one, I, it's just flipped. So Grandview Parkway is to the left, and then Garland Street is to the right. The Syndicate Hotel is the white shape up above, and then the Indigo is the white shape on the bottom. So you can kind of get a broader sense of how the walkway works. So as I mentioned, it's roughly 24.8 feet wide. We'll have a nice wide nine-foot sidewalk right down the middle of that. It'll be buffered by, you know, beautiful landscape beds, mix of plantings, hostas, boxwoods, switchgrass, peach berry coral bells. I'm not exactly sure what those are, but I'm sure they're beautiful. And they'll be within planters and also planted in the ground as well, too. So a nice mix of benches. I think we have eight of those planned. And it'd just be a beautiful space. And that star really represents, there's hotel egress coming out at that point. It's a large building, so we have egress out to Grandview, egress out to Garland Street. We also have egress here. But the more important part is the fire marshal has requested access for the fire riser room here. So that's kind of hence, you know, why we're here today. So we want to provide that access, but also want to beautify that connection, which, again, the final piece of the puzzle. So I think this will be a beautiful pedestrian way. We have security bollards at each end to prohibit cars or vehicles from coming through. It's pedestrian-only. We'll have beautiful poles and string lights kind of cascading across it to liven it up. Again, benches, landscape, just a beautiful space. And then we have a handful of renderings here of what it will look like. So this is a view from Garland, kind of looking out towards the bay. You can see the string lights, some good activity in the space. You kind of get a hint at the mural. And that's not fully designed yet either. We're working with a muralist, I believe, right now. But more than happy to work with the city to make sure that's exactly what's intended. But it's meant to be something that's Traverse City-oriented and, or maybe even the Warehouse District-oriented. But there's another view here. So again, this was, pardon, this is my chat GPT attempt at a mural. I plugged in some values and it gave me, gave me a handful. I did the Picasso option, the Van Gogh option. This is what we came up with, so. But we'll do something that's, you know, attractive here. But again, it could be a lively, a lively space. And it's more of an overhead view of the string lights and the planters, just a nice mix of plants to help soften this up a little bit. And that's it for our presentation. If you have any questions, we'll be more than happy to address them. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Oh, yes. Thank you. Very interesting presentation. I think my first question maybe isn't for you as much as for the planning staff. Can you give me a summary of the ownership history of this land? I've been told that there's some history when it belonged to Traverse City Light and Power for an underground easement. And at one time, there was consideration of it being sort of the entrance way to a tunnel system underneath Grandview. And then that Light and Power gave it over to the city. And can you, can somebody give me a little summary of how we got here?
That is information I don't have. I do know that the, that this was, this is a pre-existing easement. And it's held by the city. I don't know about a tunnel. I don't know about the previous easement with Light and Power. But that's certainly something we can look at or, you know, get some information for you. But I know that this easement already existed.
But as far as we know, at this point, it's simply property owned by the city of Traverse City, and it's not a designated park.
Right.
Okay.
Access easement.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's, that's good to know. And I have more questions, but I don't want to monopolize, so.
Go ahead.
Shall I, shall I go ahead?
Yes, go ahead.
I noticed in the original paperwork application from July of this year that the request was for a, simply a six-foot public safety fire marshal-designated easement for emergency exit. And I'm wondering, could you tell us how we got from there to this?
Let me first, I'm Paul, Jazz Capital. When I first talked to Dave and Sean about it, we needed easement just from our door to the south for the fire marshal. Better chance to get an easement if we improve that.
So it was kind of suggested by the planning staff?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
And then when we built, developed the Indigo and sold it. So early on, there was talk about a tunnel underneath, in that area. But then there wasn't funds available, so we just.
Okay, so, so Indigo Syndicate and the condominium are all under your umbrella?
We sold the Indigo.
Oh, you sold it?
2018.
Got it. Okay.
The condos and the syndicate are all ours.
Thank you.
But this is a much better plan. That would be a nice little extension to Garland.
It's very attractive. It's very attractive, no question.
So we're happy to do this.
Did I hear you mention that this is pedestrian-only, no bicycles?
Correct. It's our understanding that, you know, maybe per a work session.
There was an ordinance that you can't ride bikes sidewalks in Traverse City.
Correct. And this is considered a sidewalk?
Yeah, correct.
So it's a park, but it's a sidewalk?
It's not a park.
It's not a park? No. Will it ever be a park?
No.
No, it's just a public access easement.
Okay. What are the plans for maintenance of this space? Who owns the space in terms of maintaining and keeping it clear of snow and taking furniture in and out and all those good maintenance kind of things? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Per the easement, during the work session, we were going to handle the snow removal in the maintenance of the area.
Okay, all right. And furniture replacement and all those things.
Yeah, because also, I mean, you guys are required to keep that open for fire access, right? Yeah. That's, that's where this is coming. I believe it's from the door to this publicly-owned space, right? That's what the easement is for.
Correct.
They're required to keep that open per fire marshal, just like I, is there a similar one at the Indigo?
No, the door on the Indigo is to a fire suppression closet.
Okay.
It's a story, it's their boiler room.
Okay.
Okay. I'll, I'll keep going.
How many more do you have? Because I'd like to give other people a chance first.
Well, I did offer other people a chance, and you're welcome to call on others as a.
But did anybody else have other questions? Brian did. I saw his hand.
Great.
And then we can come back to your job.
Thank you.
Are there any infiltration concerns with subsurface contaminants?
On that site?
Yes, on that, on this specific walkway. In other words, you're not required, are you required to cap it? Or can you allow water to basically percolate down?
It can percolate down.
So there are no restrictions regarding that? Okay. And how much of this surface is, you seem like you have a lot of heavy planters. So how much of this, of these planters, you know, are they going to be open-bottom drain? Or are they going to be basically hard buckets?
They'll be open-bottom drain.
So everything, so the only real hard surface on this, other than the existing, existing door access for Indigo, its utility connections over there on the west side, and the transformers on the east side will be the nine-foot sidewalk.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, yeah. So I did, that was, one of my questions was how wide is the sidewalk? Because it wasn't indicated in our packet, so thanks for that. We've already answered about what the plannings are going to be, since they're going to be. Because that was my questions, because you're not going to get a lot of sun there.
No, we took that in consideration. They designed shade planting.
Right, and my other question is, concerns are going to be about maintenance, you know, snow removal. And I'll make a comment right now. I just, this is part of a pathway, right? It's a connection. It's the last leg before you get to the water. You kind of build it as a gathering spot. I don't know how much gathering is going to take place. I mean, I personally, I look at that, am I going to stop here to look at the walls in the mural? And, or am I going to keep going and look at the bay? I think most people are going to keep going and look at the bay. I actually think you're overbuilding this. But if you're maintaining it, it's not falling on city taxpayers, that's up to you. But I think you've got more benches than are necessary. I just don't see it. The city's responsibility was the, was the maintenance, especially the winter maintenance. My question is, you know, where are you going to put snow? You've got enough space, but now you've got all those planters. And then my other question was going to be, you know, the string lights are nice, but they're not a long-term. They're high maintenance. I own some. They're a maintenance issue, okay? So, and they're just not going to last as long as a hard fixture. But if this, if you guys want to do that, that's up to you. I mean, if you're going to take that on forever, pardon?
The string lights came from the string lighting that's on Garland right now.
Yeah, I know.
That's going to kind of incorporate those.
Again, I'm just saying it's still, it's a maintenance issue, no matter who's doing it, but.
But they're maintaining, so.
Yeah, no, the city maintains them, though. It's, my look at it is this, we're looking at the character of this. I mean, location, extent are pretty much set, right? So you look at the character of it. And one of my questions for, I'm looking at, taking a little bit more expansive view of character than we have in the past with these types of reviews, because I think it's in, based on past actions after it leaves us. But, yeah, that's, I mean, those are most of my questions, my concerns. And like I said, you know, it's like everything's maintenance. So the question I have is, this looks to me more as a high maintenance issue. You've got a bunch of flower beds that may have to be maintained. And is that necessary for, you know, for this location, for this type of park? And I would say it's too nice. But if you're going to maintain it, it's part of your, more along your lines, and you do have windows up there. I'm, you know, that's fine with me. I didn't, see, I didn't notice you had windows. You have more information now. And you've got the windows that are towards the north end, which I wasn't sure if this was just going to be windows or basically, you know, brick walls. It's a long canyon, so.
Meeting rooms at the north end of the hotel and offices, so those windows are from the meeting rooms.
So, you know, that's something else. But, yeah, I mean, it's up to you. If this is what you want to do, if you wanted to scale it back more, I'd be okay with that, too. But that's my thoughts.
Mitch?
Yes, echoing some of what Commissioners Jackie and McGilvery have already said. I appreciate that there's a substantial landscaping plan in here as a landscaper myself. But we have already entered the five or six months of the year when you do not have summer landscaping. And okay, the boxwoods will still be there, but grasses, black-eyed susans, onions, et cetera, will have to be trimmed. And you'll be back with bare ground and the omnipresent threat of snow. There is no plan for these sidewalks to be heated. There's no outlined plan for snow removal. And if we are viewing this as a path through here for pedestrian access is consistent with our master plan and is outlined in the Lower Boardman River Plan and our CIP to have pedestrian access through here, that is only functionally pedestrian access if there is an outlined plan to keep it accessible for 12 months of the year. You have sold the Indigo, so it's no longer your concern. But the accumulation of ice and snow in front of the Indigo was one of the issues, along with in front of the right, former Rite Aid at Ethan Garfield and a couple other properties around town, that led to the major street setback ordinance of 2019 to provide more space for snow that would be continuously thrown up by cars and snowplows. So this hotel will be set back a little farther from the Grandview Parkway than Hotel Indigo was. But there is still no plan for, no clearly outlined plan for the sidewalks to be heated or there to be effectively a continuous snow removal operation. Could be just a staff person going out there and clearing. And yes, the city ordinance does say that even if it is a public sidewalk adjoining your property, the property owner is responsible for that. But we have not seen compliance at the ordinance level with the property right next door. So I would, I would say this doesn't meet the standard if we don't have a strong commitment and outline plan for that snow removal. And echoing what McGilvery said about the scale. Yes, a path is nice through here, but I do question the width of nine feet. If we went with a six-foot width as the standard for our sidewalks elsewhere in the town, then I'd say that provides ample space for people to be passing through, but would also provide more impervious surface, I mean, more pervious surface, whether it's planters, grass, or other stuff for rain, for snow to melt.
Okay, I'd like to interject here a minute.
Yes.
There is only one question before this body tonight, which has nothing to do with design particularly. It's whether a public way is consistent or inconsistent with the master plan. It's only a public way. Is that consistent or inconsistent? So we've heard that it creates connectivity also in your packet. You will see that in the CIP, the city was already going to improve this, this public way. It's just that the developer's helping us out a bit by doing it earlier. So it's, it's not the design. That may come to you as part of the city commission, but we only have one objective here according to the Zoning Enabling Act, is whether it's consistent, the way itself is inconsistent or consistent. Yes, Brian?
I'm going to disagree. If you look at the motion, it says to be found consistent with the city's master plan in terms of location, character, and extent. And I think when you talk about character of a space, you're talking about the design of the space. Now, we don't have final site plan approval, okay? And I understand that, that's really a staff function. But we're talking about the character of this space. And so I, I mean, I'm also going to disagree with Mitch in that I think nine feet is reasonable because downtown, this could get a lot of traffic in the summer. Maybe not as a cut-through, especially if we ever do finish the bottom half of it. But across the second pass, second bridge across the Boardman, maybe not, I don't know. But during peak times of the summer, it could get a significant amount of cut-through. And I think that's important. So I'm going to say with nine feet, I like it. Most of our downtown sidewalks are wider than six feet. And I think that's fine. But I think that the character of this, the design, is important. And I think that, you know, if, you know, are we trying to create a pocket park? Or are we just trying to create a pathway? Because if it's just a pathway, this looks more like a pocket park. You don't need eight benches. You don't need all that lighting. You would want to do something more. But if this is a private-public partnership, and the applicant wants to cover that, those costs, long-term, I mean, forever, then I think, and if they want to improve it to that level, that's, I'm okay with it. I mean, it looks better than it would otherwise. mean, it looks better than it would otherwise. But I, so I think we should have a comment on that. But I would agree. I think that as written, I would only, I would only approve it if, you know, that we, you know, my comment is that it's, I think it's being overbuilt, personally. And it's, the question is whether or not it's going to be maintained. And if it's going to be maintained by a private entity, then I think it's, you know, it behooves us to mention that in our motion, that it's important that, you know, that we think that the character, it's, I just being, it's too nice.
I disagree.
For a space that's not going to get a lot of use. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's like, half people won't even know it's there, okay? It's just going to be a cut through. And it's, it may be used because you've got that nice entryway on Grand View Parkway. So it might be used more that way. But most people are just going to cut through the hotel coming from Garland and going through there. It's just going to be something people will find. It's just a weird spot, okay? If the city was going to do it, my comment would be it's overbuilt. If you guys are going to do it, you want to maintain it, that's up to you. But this, my advice to the city commission is to make sure you have that in writing. Otherwise, you know, get rid of some of the plantings and some of the, I wouldn't get rid of all of them. I just think 150-foot-long pocket park is really long.
It's not a pocket park.
Madam Chair, can I give you just a little bit more background, which I probably should have filled you in on before? So this plan did go to the interdepartmental group called the Design Team. So engineering, stormwater, light and power, the Streets Department, Parks Department, all had an opportunity to weigh in and give some input. That's the reason we see these bollards there and restriction on, on bikes going through. There was discussion about maintenance and a hope from that group that there would be consideration of heated sidewalks because of the, you know, propensity for, in this, in this kind of location, for there to be a lot of drifting and for snow removal timing to be kind of difficult because the city, it would need to be coordinated if they're going to push snow out onto Garland that then, you know, the Streets Department has to coordinate that to come and clear it at the time that they're clearing. But all of that was deferred to the detail of the maintenance plan that will be developed as part of the easement in coordination with the city attorney. So there will be a maintenance plan, details TBD, as, that was my understanding. The other thing is, we did have a little chat with, with Sean Prior about whether it's appropriate to add conditions. He felt that it was. If, if you're inclined to find that this is consistent with the master plan, you could add a recommendation to the city commission relative to any of the concerns that you have. He thought that that was appropriate.
I actually want to hear what, yeah, I think you were coming up to say something. So I want to hear what you have to say.
I was just going to say, as the maintenance lady who will be able to take care of it, it is a little over-engineered, but for the most part, it's for safety. The lighting, we are very particular about because we wanted to make sure that it was lit, it felt safe the entire time, the width of it. But also, just being able to partner with the Indigo and the Warehouse District was also extremely important to us. It may seem as though it won't be a used area, but I believe our neighborhood needs a lot of work in that area. There's no maintaining a whole lot down there. And I would like to see something different with that. So partnering and doing a lot of activity, don't underestimate us because we have a lot of great ideas for that space to activate it and to make it a public park area to let people know where the waterway is. So we'll get there.
I'd like to say I totally disagree. I think it's a fabulous space. I was once the Chair of the Arts Commission, so I'm just thrilled that you are going to have a mural there. I know that when you do have art there, people do stop, they do look. And, you know, you're near a hotel, you might have some food in your hand, who knows? I think it's, I think it's beautiful. And there's plenty of places to sit. I think it's exciting. Love the lighting. It's very dark in the winter.
Yes.
You know, we need lighting.
It's usually like 4:30 p.m.
Yeah. So it brightens up the space, and it's also a safety feature. I can't personally say, see anything that is inconsistent with our master plan in this, what is being presented to us. And in, and to vote against this, you have to prove that it's inconsistent with our plan. Connectivity, walkability, that's all in our plan. So I'm 100% in favor of it. And I think it's gorgeous.
May I?
Yes.
I want to hear what you have to say, but then I would like to go, if that's okay.
Oh, oh, sorry.
You know, we're making a huge commitment to this area. And this is just one kind of snapshot of the vitality and vibrancy and experiences that we hope to create and that connect us, you know, it's our neighborhood. We've been here for a while with the Indigo and now with the Syndicate and the further building. This is our neighborhood, and we want to make it vibrant and energetic and strong and create a sense of all of that. Someone mentioned kind of the discovery of it. And I think that's one of the cool things, people driving by or walking by on either side, doing a double take to see something like that in a spot that you'd never expected. So those kinds of things are really important to us and are kind of our reason for being. So again, I hope that you find it consistent.
Thank you.
I'm going to make the motion, but I think this brings up something that has been on my mind for quite a while. When we do the rewrite, I would like to look at including things like this in developments, like asking developers to do public goods like this. A lot of other cities do that. We don't. And I think that's really important going forward. So I would like to make the motion to affirm the proposed public-private project by JS Capital to improve the city-owned property at 225 West Grand View Parkway for a public way as presented at the November 18, 2025 Planning Commission meeting, be found to be consistent with the city's master plan in terms of location, character, and extent.
Support.
I was going to open it for public comment and then come back. Or you want to make another comment before I go to public?
I'll go to public comment.
You want to go, Brian?
Public.
I had a comment.
Go ahead.
So.
For Commission comments?
Thank you.
So I was just thinking if, let's say, the partnership, there wasn't a partnership, so then the hotel will get developed, there would just be a, someone has to put the sidewalk in, right? Because that's a requirement from the Fire Marshal. And then the city would be on the hook for both whatever the design and cost and the maintenance. Yeah, it just seems like a no-brainer that, at least in my opinion. I mean, the design is one thing. I just think, if not, it would just be a weedy sidewalk.
Which is what it is now. It's what it is now.
So, that's just how I'm viewing it from a, you know, because it could take us years before we got all of our funding and everything in place and the maintenance. So if they're offering to partner with the city, it seems like a good, good opportunity.
Okay, let's get the rest of the comments before we go to public comment then, Jackie.
Okay. A couple of follow-up questions. One is on maintenance. Your involvement in Indigo certainly demonstrates that you're, you're committed to the area, and then the property is, is resold. Are there assurances that any maintenance commitments will travel with the property, not with future owners? That, that, that there won't be a gap in the commitment to maintenance?
To be tied to the easement or maintenance.
Tied to the easement. Great, good. I have another. I'm, I'm wondering about the potential that you see for conducting commerce in that space. It seems to me an ideal place to settle in with a coffee or a drink or a little bite of food. And what are your plans regarding that?
We have a restaurant at Garland, as well as a lobby bar/coffee shop in the middle. So when you look at, right, when you look at the Grand View Parkway, and we have that pocket park in the front that opens up, that is where the coffee slash bar will be, and it will be operation from morning till night. And you're allowed to leave in between. But the Hotel Indigo also has both of those things. And so we would allow anybody in our neighborhood to sell to anybody that would walk through there.
And so you anticipate consumption, if not sale, of food and beverage in the, in the passageway?
Yes.
Is that an allowed use by the city for a passageway? So.
Sorry, I did not mention alcohol. And that's something that we would figure out with our liquor license and the Indigos, but it wouldn't be something that we are proponent of as of right now.
So it, it's fair to say that it adds a benefit to your properties to have an outdoor seating area where, where your food and beverage can be consumed conveniently?
It benefits the entire neighborhood. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So I, I would suggest that we need to pursue exploration of city ordinance to find out. I know there are limitations in some of our parks, and this is not a park, but, you know, we've recently updated our ordinances relative to beverage consumption on sidewalks.
Alcohol.
Yeah, alcohol.
Alcoholic beverages.
Right.
Not coffee.
Right.
Not sodas.
Right.
Not water.
So I, I just think that's a loop that needs to be circled around. And let's see, just a general comment. This is a piece of city-owned property, a city asset, 3,750 square feet of Bayview property. And I, I am, I, I would need some more convincing to understand that this is the highest and best use of that property. So I, I will not be voting in favor of it.
So a better use would be leaving it weeded?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying we haven't explored any alternatives for it. And then it's a city asset, and we are giving an easement of the entire city asset to a, a private developer for their use and benefit.
But it's currently not a city asset. That's, we're turning it into that.
It's owned by the city. The property is an asset. Yes, that land is a city asset.
Yes, but it's not improved at the moment.
Correct.
And so they're offering to improve it.
Correct, yeah. So the easement is only going to be the portion between the buildings. The rest is privately owned. That's my understanding.
The easement is just from their door to this public property. So I'm just looking at the tax parcel viewer, and that, that whole piece of property is owned by the city of Traverse City right now.
From up to the Indigo wall?
From Garland to Grand View Parkway, except for M.D.O. easements.
Okay.
Any other comments before I open it up for Brian?
So, I mean, it's not like the city is required to put a sidewalk in there, okay? There's no requirement for the city to do this. It is being, it's needed because there needs to be access to the fire door and for the fire department. And that's why you have windows on there. And the really asset of this to the both properties is the fact that they don't have to have a firewall because the buildings aren't budding each other. They've got a 25-foot public right-of-way there, or whatever the easement or whatever the city owns, ownership of that utility. It's really, it's utility property that goes between. So that's the value of it. And that value is the same value as putting, having a street or any other sidewalk or alley there. It could have been turned into an alley. It's technically wide enough. I mean, if you want to talk about using a public asset, Indigo got that, see that big thing on the left? Those utility access, that was a last-minute thing because they didn't realize, they weren't planning on putting it there, then they had to put it there. It's the same reason we're here today, is because technically, if the city said no to an easement, they'd literally have to redesign their building to get past fire code, which is ridiculous because I think a pathway through here is about the best you're going to get, okay? I don't see, you can't do anything else with this property.
And I would like to point out that the CIP, for a year or more from now, it's, they were.
I understand that. I'm not arguing the pathway issue. We understand that it's a part of the pathway. It makes sense to use it as that. I have no issues with that. Someone did mention, when you guys said water, I thought a water filling station there would be really nice, really great community neighborhood asset. I don't think there's one very close.
No.
So anyways, just throwing that out there.
Noted.
Noted.
And again, it's, you know, like I said, I, I just, you know, it's more a question for planning commissioners is simply this, is that, you know, if you looked at that and you said, okay, and you asked the city, what's it going to cost the city taxpayer to maintain that property? And then you have to say, okay, we're going to put a high-maintenance project in the city somewhere, okay? It's going to require a lot of maintenance. It's going to call, required to keep looking good. It's going to require regular weeding, lightbulb replacement, two-phase snow removal. If you were going to put it somewhere in the city, is this where you would invest those funds? In other words, would this be the proper location? And my answer to that would be no, okay? This would not be the proper location for that. However, if a public entity is willing to take this on and literally bind themselves to the land on a maintenance agreement to continue to maintain these and change the, replace the light strings when they fail, light bulbs, whatever, and take all that on, then it's really, then the only question for the city is, how wide do you want a sidewalk? I think nine feet's perfect. So again, my issue is if I was doing it, I would have fewer planters, so I'd have someplace to stick the snow in the winter. That's just my thought. And/or so wherever you have shovel, and it doesn't have to lift it over the planters, shove up against the wall. That's how I would do it. But hey, you guys are going to figure this out. That's up to the city and everyone else.
And we've already heard.
So I'd like to put, I mean, I'm concerned about the maintenance, but I will trust that our commissioners here will express there is concern about, I don't know if we need to add an amendment to that, that this is, you know, that we feel this with the maintenance handled by the applicant.
We've already heard that the Design Team has addressed that. We've already heard from the developers that they are going to handle it.
They don't have a finished maintenance agreement.
That it's in the easement.
No, it's not in there yet. They don't, it's not in there yet. They don't have anything finalized.
It's in the works, though.
I mean, it's not finalized.
Yeah, so we could add pursuant to a finalized maintenance agreement.
I think that's micromanaging.
Yeah.
I think it's implied that staff knows that this is needed. As a requirement for this lot, they'll have to do a maintenance plan. They know that. It's in the works. I think us adding that is micromanaging.
It's also, when you get back to this question, is consistent or inconsistent with the master plan?
Well, part of it is also our documentation. I mean, we don't really, we're kind of just always just kind of go, okay, go ahead. And then little details come back to us. And, you know, or things that happen that we weren't expecting. And then how do you say, well, we didn't know they were going to do that because we just talked about whether it was inconsistent to put a park here. We didn't look at how the park was going to look, or what trees were going to get cut down, et cetera. So, you know, and that question becomes, do we want to be, should we have, should we be micromanaging these? So for example, there's nothing in our packet that says how wide this sidewalk could be. It could be, you know, you could, they could make it 14 feet because, and we would have said that would have been acceptable. If it was a 16-foot-wide sidewalk, would that be acceptable to everyone?
Where in the master plan does it say that a 14-foot sidewalk is inconsistent with the master plan?
I would question, there's, I would say basically, because if you talk, look at it, we also. it, we also talk about all sorts of things about the natural environment, it's very important to us, including in the downtown, stormwater, attention to stormwater is very important to us. I would think that that would be too much hard service, impervious pavement, for us to ignore the issue of impervious pavement in something regarding consistency with the master plan, if, is, I, I think would be very short-sighted. I would say would make it inconsistent with the master plan. I'm just saying that what we saw here tonight, that this is part of the presentation, part of it, then I'm okay with it. But, none of that is in writing, and in government, if it's not in writing, it doesn't exist. So it's not in our packet, it's not part of the, it's not part of the record that we're approving tonight.
I do have a motion on the table, so I'd like to bring it back.
Yes, I know.
So you can, you can...
Point of order, I don't think the discussion is complete.
Well, first, we first have to hear from the public, too.
But I'm not sure commission discussion is complete. I have a comment that I'd like to add.
Okay.
As a commission, we have oversight responsibilities. I would, I would argue that due diligence is very different from micromanagement. I would agree with Commissioner McGillivray that there have been surprises in the past, and frankly, I'm disturbed by the idea of the very narrow guardrails that, that are being placed upon us as a commission. I, I agree with Commissioner McGillivray that our master plan addresses in, has an entire chapter on environment. So, yes, that is a legitimate issue to be discussing, and I am concerned about the impact of adding even more impervious surfaces in between our bay and our river. So, duly noted, please.
May I open it for public comment? Are we, okay. Is there any public comment on this item? Please come to the podium if there is. Okay, there's no public comment. So I'll bring it back to you. We have a motion on the table with a second. Are there any final comments before we vote? Mitch?
Yes. Well, on term, on the terms of the motion, we can say that we find a pathway through here consistent with master plan, undoubtedly is, but that is not the way the motion is worded, it is motion to affirm the proposed public-private project by JS Capital to improve the city-owned property. So I would say that both that and the specific terms of location, character, and extent do allow us to evaluate this as a specific project rather than the mere existence of an easement in conjunction with other plans. I find on its face, a pathway through here to be patently aligned with our master plan, with our CIP, with other documents. I find the general outline of this and how it looks in pictures on a nice summer day to be overall pleasing, but it does bring up questions of maintenance, snow removal, vegetation clearing, a replacement of light bulbs. Yes, there are strings of lights that look much the same across Garland Street and multiple other places, but by putting two tall, solid-walled buildings next to each other, it will serve to funnel any north wind to an even greater extent. Yes, prevailing winds are out of the west, but we can have strong north breezes. In the face of Superstorm Sandy, some 15 years ago, winds were in, in excess of 60 miles an hour, and it could be over 70 funneled between two buildings like this, which, yes, lights will survive most conditions, but that wind will knock out some and entail significant maintenance over a longer period of time.
And the developers said they would do that?
Mm-hmm. I'd like that in writing. Also, especially if you're going to have more traffic in here, especially if you're going to have people sitting on benches, I would like to see some trash cans. There are only three public trash bins along Garland Street at present, and during high-traffic times of year, they can get overflowing more often than other parts of our downtown. So, yes, trash is something that any hotel or other business has to deal with, and a simple matter of a trash bin or two, I'd say it's something that can be easily added.
Renderings, but yes.
Thank you.
Discuss this with commission the last time, then yes.
Thank you.
Question for staff. So is this presentation they made today part of the record?
Yes.
Okay, so when we approve this, this is part of the record?
Yes.
Because there are details in here that was not in our packet? So when we're voting on this, we're voting on what's in our packet and this presentation?
We can make it part of the record.
Yes, I want it part of the record.
I think if you ask for it to be part of the record, we can add it.
Does that, does that require an amendment or a motion?
No, I think we can add it to the record.
Thank you.
Anything else you want to say? From staff?
I'm just looking again at the, the act that does require that the planning commission determine if there's consistency with the master plan, and it does say that, basically, if the planning commission disapproves, the commission shall submit its reasons for approval or disapproval to the body having jurisdiction. And so the, the city commission has ultimate jurisdiction, so this is sort of, in a roundabout way, a recommendation.
I know, the city commission always has the ultimate decision.
Yeah, it's just a way to get it up there.
But, you know, it doesn't mean we shouldn't discuss it and...
No, no, no.
No.
Make our recommendations.
But I, I guess I'm asking is reasons might be appropriate?
I think reasons are appropriate. I think reasons are that they're going to beautify this area, we find the pathway appropriate, right? The pathway is appropriate. Do we need to put this in part of a motion? The reasons? Or do you just want us to state that? Why?
I think it's, particularly if you're recommending not approving, I would state the reasons for the record and as, as part of the motion, but actually the...
Well, I'm not going to vote no, so I'm not worried about the no part.
All right, great.
Okay, this is, I mean, I, I, and I apologize to the applicants for keeping you into the Michigan State-Kentucky game tonight. I'm certainly not happy about it, but anyways. But it is more, for me, it's more of a, an issue, a philosophical, or a question on how we review these going forward, as much as it is this particular project in front of us. I mean, look, it's beautiful, it looks beautiful, I understand these are just renderings, and they never look as nice, but in the, sometimes they look better, but they're just renderings. We're not voting on the pictures, I understand that. But I appreciate the willingness, the amount of effort you've put into this, you know, going forward. I do appreciate it, and it's, I mean, you could have done a lot less, or proposed a lot less, and probably gotten, gotten it from the city commission, so, pardon?
No. I guess it's gorgeous, stop.
No, look, if you guys want to redraw it and come back to us with, with more, you know...
We want the neighborhood to be amazing.
So, you know, that's, you know, that's fine, that's in you guys. You know, I just, you know, I would list, I mean, let's give them the reasons we're approving it. I guess one is, I mean, for me, their willingness to do the maintenance, to be bound to do the maintenance. Two, it's part of the long-term pathway plan. Three, it beautifies what is otherwise an undeveloped, unused corridor. Four, it, it's designed with safety in mind of the bollards. Kudos to staff to come up with that. I love the extensions of the plantings, so it's not a blind corner, which is shown on these plants, you know, because people do ride their bikes in downtown streets, and they come out of nowhere, you know, down these things, so I think those are, you know, and you're painting the, you're proposing to paint all the Transformers, pretty color.
Art, public art.
So, no, I mean, so you're, you know, you're adding nature to the downtown, so I'd like, as long as it's, I think the sidewalk width is adequate, I don't think it's overkill, and you're providing, you know, you're using roughly, you know, about a third of impervious. So, yeah, I think you're, I can't think of any other reasons.
All right, thank you. Any other comments before we vote?
Just a, one question. With regard to the safety of bollards, is it anticipated that those will be designed to be like removed, or you can, you know, usually they collapse in and you can pull them up?
That's not the case. No, they're, they're permanent fixed, fixed items.
Okay.
Yeah, because...
How does that affect snow removal?
There's, there's space to go around them.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the table, I think we've discussed this. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
No.
Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Anderson?
No.
Commissioner DeTuri?
Yes.
Commissioner Hershey?
Yes.
Commissioner McGillivray?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Swanson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very, very much. You've put in a lot of thought into this and this surrounding neighborhood, we appreciate that.
Thank you, we appreciate your time, thank you.
My 10th meeting about the same development.
Okay, that's the only item we had tonight. Are there any announcements from anyone? No announcements, that takes us to closing public comment. Does anyone have a closing public comment? Please approach the podium. Seeing none, this meeting, any comment from mission? Seeing none, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your time.